All right, so we have an agenda and thank you all for attending. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Lisa had sent a number of articles out earlier. Are there any thoughts, comments, questions about any of that?
Ellen would ask if we could include the building committee minutes, the not-to-talk as part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, they came in kind of late. If folks are okay with that. I've seen that.
That's great.
Great.
I'm okay with it. I see less. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Including the building committee meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On we go. Action items. We're on to finance. One of our favorite topics.
The finance committee met last Monday via Zoom. Had a very productive meeting and it wasn't long. And we have, you have received financial statements. In fact, a little bit more than what we had at the meeting. So I would like to entertain questions about the financial statements to start with.
I guess I would, I would just ask Ellen, was there anything, since you know, trying to go through, go through everything and we can't see it all. Was there anything unusual, anything you need to report to us?
Absolutely. I can't at this point say there was anything very unusual. But we do, would say that Lisa is, you know, certain parts of the budget are not being used due to the closure of the libraries, but as she put in her notes too, certain other things have had to be purchased. And that is going, we're not sure exactly how that's all going to play out financially yet. With the, you know, expenses of not only closing, but trying to run the library now and how will we reopen? So we're not, we're not sure how that plays out completely in the budget at this point.
Right.
Right? But there wasn't anything unusual at this, in these statements at this point.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks Ellen.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, could I ask for a motion to accept the financial statements for April 2020?
So I would move that we accept the financial statements for April 2020.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
A second, that's Meg.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The claims, as we've noted the last month and we're noting this month also, we, I am not, the person who usually goes to the library and looks at the various checks that are being written and sent out because of the library closure that auditing has not taken. Therefore, we see them, but they're usually, as we know, as we said in the past, they're paid. So the claims for April, I would like you to say that the finance committee has approved them and recommends that the board approve them also. Questions?
You want to make a motion then?
Okay. Thank you Larry. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you Joe. All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we also recommend, we also looked at the 990, which is the report Lisa, that is sent to the state from libraries, right?
It's all nonprofits because we don't actually file taxes. We file the 900.
So it's a report that is issued every year and we send it to the state and it's for nonprofits, all right? We looked over the 990, we approved the 990, it's already been sent in, am I right?
I don't know. I think I told, I think I told Tom to wait until after the board meeting because he just asked me last Thursday. So I think, because it usually has to be in by May 15th, but there's this extension because of, you know.
Okay, okay, so you're not positive. But anyway, we felt that the finance committee that we should have a resolution at the full board to approve this statement, this 990 report that's going to be sent or has been sent to the state. And was sent out to all of us, right? Everybody on the board?
I think I sent it when Elaine first gave it to me, not as.
And I, I think it was a while back. I really do. Okay? Questions about the 990? Okay, could I have a resolution? I will make the resolution, a motion that we accept, give approval to the 990 report from nonprofits, Seymour Library, to the state. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All in favor? Oops, sorry Lisa.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right, super. Okay, that's the financial, finance report. Our next meeting will be in June. I don't quite remember the date.
Um, Larry.
So Lisa, can I ask Ellen, this came up at the foundation meeting, which I'll be reporting on. Have you, you haven't sent out your RFPs for the audit? No, no. Okay.
That was in the minutes, am I right? We haven't sent it out Lisa, but we talked about it.
Right. And you're going to do that.
And we are going to do it and I believe we said July.
In July, okay. The foundation will be doing the same, okay.
Okay, all right.
Gotcha.
And in the past, has the foundation had the same business due?
Well, we, I think in the past, we've done different things, but we, we, at one point, used the same accounting group because we got a bit of a break when they did both of ours, the district and the foundation. That was no longer the case this past three years. So I think we're probably going to do separate, I think it's good if we share the accountants that we are going to be sending the proposals to though, since there aren't that many out there. We're supposed to get some suggestions from the college, from Guy Casentino. So, so we will make sure to share all of that with you guys.
We also have a great resource in Patty, our library treasurer. He shared the list and the RFP from the school system. So, and we've talked a lot about who's left in the field and so I have those firms and you know, the school RFP is way, way, way more detailed than what we would need, but Lisa Green, you know, Patty asked Lisa to share it with me, so we have that. And yes, I agree, we'll definitely go back and forth.
Share that, okay.
Backtrack one minute to the 990. Larry, I sent you the e-file form that I need you to print, sign, scan, and send back to Elaine. And where it says Pat Messina, Elaine said you could just draw a line through it, or did I send it to you Joe?
I think you sent it to me.
Oh, Larry, forget it. Did I send it?
I'm thinking, wait.
Ross, I'll pass fame and.
I don't see anything, but.
Okay, then I sent it to Joe, sorry.
Yep.
He's the finance officer, so.
Good plan.
All right. You just don't want to forget like that I have that term that needs to happen.
I will, I will take care of that now.
All right, thank you Joe.
Sign, scan, all that good stuff, right?
Sign, seal, delivered. Okay.
Okay. That's the finance report.
All right, very good. Any, any other questions or comments about it then for Ellen? Here in none, move on to committees. There is an executive committee, there's, we're one shy. Ginny, did you want to take this?
Sure, yeah, I'll take this on. So we're just sort of playing catch-up here for 2020. So a few things we really need to have approved by the board. And one of them is approval of the executive committee. This is a new committee that we approved through bylaws and the chair of the executive committee will always be the director. So Lisa is the chair. And then we can have up to five members of it. We have four on a slate to be approved at this afternoon's meeting and they are our officers. They are, just got a picture, I'm reading it. Larry, Ellen, Joe, and Russ. And as we discussed in the past, the executive committee really meets when we really need to have a decision made, something comes up and we can't convene an entire board. They will meet on our behalf, but they will keep us up to date on anything they do, when the meetings are and so on, and what the decisions are. Is it pretty much, I don't want to read the whole thing. So what I would like to do is make a motion that we approve the executive committee for 2020 to be Larry, the president, and Lisa's going to be the chair. Larry, Ellen, Joe, and Russ.
We need five board members to be, according to that, remember that whole dust-up about the public education law?
Right.
And that five board members actually is a quorum, but we need one more person to be on.
So is there, is there anybody on the board now that would be, would like to serve on that committee? If there isn't, I will serve on it. But I wanted to make sure, are there other people that are interested in, it shouldn't be, it's an important committee, but it's, it shouldn't be a real time sucker, really. It's an opportunity for Lisa to also present in detail things that might need some discussion.
She's going for it.
Who, who?
Somebody talking?
Well, somebody's going to tell me they want to be on the executive committee and I'm, I'm waiting.
Well, I, yeah. I don't know that there's, there seems to be some hesitation.
People are hiding.
Yeah.
All right, I, I will, I will be on it.
Be much appreciated and if we.
Sure. Sure. No, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it. I just want to make sure there aren't other people that are interested. Sure, it's your last chance. Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you say the names again, please?
Yes, I will. Larry Libertor, Ellen Dela Strido, Joe Runkel, Russ Harkins, and Ginny Kent.
Okay. Okay.
Lisa?
Yes.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
And Lisa's considered obviously a part of the community.
So, so any, let me just make a, a motion for that slate. Can I have a second?
I'll second, this is Meg.
Hey Meg, okay. And in further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good.
Thank you all.
Say that again?
I said thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So one thing I'm going to do after we do this, after the meeting, I will send out more information to each committee. So I have descriptions of the committees and I'm going to be asking, maybe Lisa may want to schedule these meetings, I'll talk to her about it. But I will send you the most recent description, which is in our bylaws, so that you understand the committee you just got approved to be on, based on what you do it, and even if you're not. So what I'd like to do next is I'm going to name the committees and who I have for them listed and then I'm going to ask for a motion of the executive committee. So the executive committee has to approve the chairs of our committees. So, makes sense? According to our bylaws. All right, so the first committee is the audit committee. And on the audit committee, I have Ellen Dela Strido, she's the chair. Joe Runkel, Mike. I have Mike Trapani, is that correct?
Joe, Mike can't be on the audit.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
On the finance committee, but he can't be on.
Yeah, I don't know why he's still on here. Okay, I just got rid of, I mean, I just erased Mike and Jim Hanley. So I have Ellen, Joe, and Jim on that committee.
And Ellen is the chair?
Yeah, Ellen is the chair.
You want to do the whole slate or do you want to do the?
I'm going to read, let me read the whole slate down if you want and then, oh, I don't care.
No, why don't we do it that way? Go ahead.
Next is the finance committee. And so the finance committee has Ellen Dela Strido as chair, Joe Runkel, Jim Hanley, Molly LaRonde is our community person, Patty Festa, ex officio, is treasurer. And is Mike on this as a foundation board representative?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want me to read that again? It would be Ellen is chair, Joe, Jim, Molly LaRonde, Patty Festa, and Mike Trapani.
Correct. Everything else, yep?
Okay, next is the board governance committee and that's, I'm chair. And I have Russ Harkins, Meg Danic, and Don Taylor. Okay? Next is building committee and we have Larry Libertor as chair, Bill Glassby as staff, Chris Hutchinson as foundation board representative, and Joe Runkel. Are there others on that committee that I'm missing?
Kathleen Carnes.
Oh, okay. Let me just get her. Okay, all right. Thank. It's for our committees. Any questions about that before I, in the form of a motion? Okay. As a reminder, you can attend other committee meetings. You just wouldn't be voting on, on things, but they're open to everyone. And Lisa, just for the sake of not sounding redundant, of course, you're on all of these committee meetings.
Thank you.
Want to rub it in, but, okay.
I add another reminder. Ginny?
Say that again.
Can I add another reminder about, all of the committees are still subject to open meeting law?
Okay.
This is going to sound really sacrilegious, but you know, that whole thing about wherever two or three are gathered in his name? Well, whenever three board members are gathered, that's considered a meeting and is subject to open meeting law. So I really need to publish when meetings are held, so if we hold meetings at the last minute, it's challenging for me to publish when the meetings will be held. Or conversely, when we change the meetings, because I have to jump through hoops to make, to publish all that. So it helps when we're on a schedule.
So maybe Lisa, you and I can suggest a schedule and for the meetings and I'll send it out with the descriptions rather than.
That's.
We could just base it on what we've done in past years so that people that are used to the meetings will.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? And some of them don't meet every month and we can talk about that. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Ginny, just, I just have, if you would, explain the difference between audit committee and finance?
Yes. So the audit committee, first of all, cannot have anyone that is not a trustee on it. It's composed solely of library trustees. They review with the auditor, scope and planning of the audit prior to its commencement, discuss completed audit, including any material risk and weaknesses in internal controls, restrictions in the scope of the auditor's activities. Want me to read the whole thing?
No, no. I think.
No, I hear no. Anyway, the audit committee, it, it will annually consider the performance and independence of the auditor and will keep the board apprised of the committee's activities, will oversee and maintain documentation regarding the implementation of the conflict of interest.
Right.
It's audit.
This is a result of the nonprofit revitalization act of 2013 with amendments in 2016 that split out the different committees. They, they changed a lot of the language and they required an audit committee. Other, the, the rest of the finance committee could attend, anybody can attend the audit committee meeting, but they cannot vote. Only, only the board members who comprise can vote.
Well, and the other thing is, you might think of the audit committee as oversight and the finance committee is activity, the financial condition of the library. And they make recommendations.
Audit committee only meet once a year when the audit is being done? Yes, usually Lisa, or?
Normally, normally twice.
Twice, okay.
You normally at the very beginning, like January, February, you have to sit down with them to review their plan as to when they're coming in, the building, who they have to meet with, and, and go over any, any special circumstances you might have. And then the final wrap-up is the other time. So it's usually just twice a year.
Okay. And, and this is because of a law that was recently passed Lisa?
Correct.
Okay. We did not have an audit committee before.
We kind of, yeah.
We kind of did, didn't we?
Yeah, it's kind of the same committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
The distinction is that it can only consist of, of board members. But as you said, Lisa, anybody can attend and, and including the general public because it's kept three or more gathered, right?
That's right. Unless you're at a football game, if you're at a football game, it's okay. You happen to know that, or fact.
But there could be a time when this executive committee would have to meet within a few days, am I right? Could possibly be a situation?
Typically not.
All right. So we would just publish that we were going to meet such and such a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that, to, to the executive committee that we approve Ellen Dela Strido to be chair of the audit committee and the finance committee.
Do I have to be chair of the audit?
Well, you don't have to.
I have the finance, could somebody just step up, somebody else just?
Joe will.
Joe will.
Well.
Yeah, because I have the chair of the finance, so make, thank you Joe, that would be great.
I'm happy about it.
Is that you crying Joe or what?
It so happens that the mom and dad had to go out for a little bit. That's why we're in charge here, the two of them.
Okay. Thank you Joe. Finance committee is Ellen. Board governance committee is Ginny Kent. Building committee is Larry Libertor. And so can I have the, so I made a motion that the executive committee approve those chairs for our committees for 2020. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Ginny.
Thanks, I'll follow up with everybody.
Great. I wanted to just insert, we're going to get to the reopening, but Nancy, you had sent me an email earlier today, did you want, I didn't see where there was a report from the foundation?
I think it's under discussion items, Larry.
Um, I just.
Yeah, Lisa added it.
Okay. Oh, I see it, all right, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at my old, the old.
That's okay, it was a last-minute addition.
Right.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to miss that, okay. All right, and we talked about reopening, we'll, we'll keep our order intact then. So reopening then, resolution?
So, um, so the, the thing is that reopening is up to the board. It's not something that I can do by myself. And there's a couple of libraries in our Finger Lakes library system have put together these like massive, like six-page reopening resolutions. I asked Sarah if that was what we needed to do and she said no. You know, it's, it could be as simple as the board directs the library director to reopen according to the curbsafety plan that is being worked on and all the regulations that we have to follow. So we, the thing is, there's a chance we might find out on Monday that we can reopen on Monday. So my plan is that whatever the day is that we find out, we can allow people back in the building, it would just be key, key staff members for the first week. And then for several weeks after that, it's just going to be small groups of employees and we will not be allowing the public in the building for quite a while. So I thought, since we have our meeting now and there's a chance we might be able to allow staff in the building next week, if you would consider directing me to reopen according to whatever regulations I need to follow, that would be helpful. But it's totally up to you.
I don't see any reason why we don't just do a simple resolution that we direct the director to follow protocol that's, that would be Cuba County, state of New York?
Cuba County.
To reopen, to begin the reopen process.
Can I ask a question? So the protocol for Cuba County comes from who? Our health department or legislature? Where does it come from?
Everybody is, not me. So the state, the state says, talk to your local people. The local people are saying, hmm, talk to the state. So Denise Hui, and she, she's in the health department, has said, we don't know anything about it, so who knows? I've been working more on the legislature side, so I've been talking to Trish Kerr. The Cato board president has reached out to their representative on the legislature, Keith Batman, also is part of the conversation and his is the most recent email that he got back from Elaine Coleman McNabb that says, we really don't know. We, we don't have any information and the minute we do, we know the libraries need some direction and we'll get back to you. So I don't know, I think we're going to hear from the legislature, whether that's in conjunction with them talking to the health department, I, I don't know.
Do you know how they managed it in Anadaga County?
Anadaga, yeah.
How did they work through it? Would that be a model?
First of all, I think that their county executive is not really all that competent, but he just generally included libraries in this phase one opening without understanding a lot of the details. And he, during one of his meetings, he said you could make a reservation to go to the zoo and then you could call libraries and make a reservation. Like, very confusing, but it's local, local executive making the decision. Tompkins County, county executive has made the decision that Tompkins County can open. There was something at the state level, if you look at the New York Forward dashboard that said libraries can open with restrictions, but when you read it, it says government libraries, municipal libraries. We're a special district library, we probably fit in the definition, but all the other libraries in the Finger Lakes library system, except for two, which are municipal, are association libraries. They are not included in that, you're, it's okay to open, you know, at the state level. So it's, it's really confusing.
But do you know why there would be a distinction? I mean, you know, we, we look and feel from the public's perspective, we look and feel exactly the same way as any other library in the Finger Lakes library system. It's just our, our charter or our, our way of, of funding, essentially, right?
Right, right, but it just makes us, we just have to obey different laws. We would actually possibly be able to open with restrictions, which is curbside pickup only, where the rest of Cuba County can't. We might fall under that, but we are trying to do things together in that we're all opening at the same time, so that we're not putting undue pressure on any one entity, if that makes sense.
Well, plus to, so the public is not so confused, I, I mean.
Yeah.
It's impossible for people to.
Why would one be open and not another?
Right, right.
That puts whatever, you know, it puts pressure on you because the other counties around us are starting to.
And most, yeah.
Right.
And most importantly, the staff, we have to think about the people that would have to return to work in a building and, and their safety.
Well, the opening.
That's primary.
The opening is a two-phase process.
Yes.
So the opening would clearly be for staff only. And we may, I mean, we had a meeting. And we may, I mean, we had a meeting, when was that, on the 14th or something, Lisa?
When, uh, yes, yeah.
Somewhere around.
On 14th, yeah.
Right, right. And I think we had talked mostly about what would happen or what that would look like in terms of staff. So in preparation for getting the staff in the building, there'd be a number of steps that could take place. In terms of getting the public in the building, that's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
And that's not going to happen. We don't think until.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Get staff in and perhaps start doing a, not a curbside kind of service, but at least somebody could stop and pick up a book. There is some thought about how that might happen. And what you're doing, what you're asking for, I think, is a resolution authorizing you to open in accordance with authorities having jurisdiction, which we assume is the county.
Right.
Right? And using protocol and safety plans that would be published.
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question. I didn't know who you were looking to, to give you the opinion. Oh, it sounds like the authorities looking at the log.
The authority, the authority having jurisdiction is.
Right, there we go.
And everything, right?
All right.
But I think, we think it's based on county.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Makes sense.
So is it a motion, Larry?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other discussion or question? Dixie, can you make some sense out of that?
Sort of.
Just going to say, let's just say the words again.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we're giving authorization to Lisa to open the library in accordance with, you know, requirements set forth by a local authority or authority having jurisdiction.
I think local and state, because.
Local and state.
Well, but local has, okay, that's fine, local and state. But following protocol, published safety plan. And at this point, it's authorization to proceed with opening for staff, right?
Yes.
Right.
You don't need for us to say, open the public whenever you feel like it. Right?
No, we're definitely not. We're ready for the public. And I will be sending, you know, updates as soon as they come in. I wouldn't just randomly say, okay, we're ready. You know, the minute I get word, I'll email the board and say, here's where we are. This is what, you know, I've heard from the state. This is what the county libraries have decided. Here's, you know, all of our plans for the, whatever the dates are. This is who will be called back to work for the first week. Here's the plan for the second week. Some of it is going to be, you know, changing on a daily basis, right? Depending on whatever the newest guidance is.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry? Somebody asking a question?
Oh, we just haven't voted, that's all, I don't think.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't vote.
Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Okay. Jenny seconded.
All right. So then, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those? Okay, there you go, Lisa.
Good luck.
There you go, Lisa.
You're going to be retired. I'm so sorry for the days when I just bombard you with lots of emails. I'll now try to consolidate it.
That's all right.
Okay.
Everything's clear as mud, though. You're all set.
Thank you for that.
All right. Let's move on to the COVID-19 policies.
Right. So these are two, the first is this Family Medical Leave Act expansion and paid sick leave. And then the second is the library COVID-19 policies. Did everybody have a chance to look at them? Are there questions about them?
Yeah, I just had a question about, so is this sort of a template that we are taking and using? And we're going to pop it into our policy book based on the requirements of COVID-19 shutdown? So what's specific to, I mean, do you? Yeah, just ask you, what's relevant to us specifically? I did read through both of them, and I just wanted to make sure what was really important to us to know out of those.
There's this, there's two different versions. There's the federal and the state. And I can't remember off the top of my head. One of them expires December 31st.
Right.
And the other one does not have an expiration date. Okay, so the federal. So the HR consultant said, you know, she hesitates to put things in the handbook, then you're going to have to, like, approve it again when there's dates, which is why she put the Seymour Library COVID-19 Policies as an addendum, not as part of the handbook.
Okay, so these are part of the, these are part of the employee handbook?
Right, the employee handbook. We don't actually follow FMLA. We don't, we fall under the criteria. We're not obligated. But now we are obligated because of FICRA. There's some of those regulations. So that's what this, the leave expansion and paid sick leave. So I, there's no, we might add that in to the handbook, but there's not a specific date right now, I think. I'd have to go back and look at it. So both of these are things right now that we have to have in place for employees. So if you're like, like a good one for the Family Medical Leave Act is if you are homeschooling your children because schools are closed, you could apply for paid leave. This made sense way back in March. But given where schools are going to be ending in the next couple of weeks, we probably wouldn't have, you know, Jill or Lee probably wouldn't apply for leave.
And how is this funded?
I don't.
I think it's in our budget. I think.
Well, I mean, so we pull it out of our budget. It's not something we budgeted for, but we would have funds to cover it?
We'd have to. Right.
Oh. So do you, are you expecting?
This is the, this is the, no, I'm not expecting anybody to apply. They would have applied. Ready. The paid sick leave, again, I don't feel, I don't think we really have a choice. I think that this is how it works. And we just have to be ready if somebody applied for that, that we're going to have to do.
So this is, we weren't eligible to apply for PPP, but if we were, this was where these funds would have come from?
Yes.
And I think these funds would come from another law that possibly the federal government might come through.
Right, might.
Might, as I say, might. Help states and municipalities.
Okay.
Okay. And it says on the top of this, this one, FMLA, it's through December 31st, 2020. So this one is just now, for this year, for this circumstance, right? Okay.
And I could bring the Seymour, this one. So this one is more about, you know, talking about how do we manage infectious diseases? And that.
Right.
We're not going to, we're not going to be prejudiced against somebody that might have or live with somebody who's had this disease, having to go through whatever the clearance is to be able to come back in the rare event of a publicly declared pandemic. We'd have to follow whatever CDC says. And then it goes on to the Families First part about what that policy is. Here's the part about the emergency paid sick leave. So this just goes into a little bit more detail. What the expansion is. The thing I think I said in my note, don't pay attention to this part right here about telecommuting. That part is still being worked on. There were some of the procedures that I feel aren't applicable to us. Yeah, we do need a telecommuting procedure, but it's not this. But the first few sections, we do need.
And Lisa, sorry, this is coming from where, as Jenny was saying, the template? Where does this come from?
This came from the HR consultant, Caprice.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if there are edits that need to be made on this, or are we being asked?
Are we, yeah, are we supposed to?
Could, could we, I'm asking you to approve Section 1 and Section 2, not Section 3.
Okay, Section 1. Can you go back? I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. Section 1 is this communicable disease management.
Right.
So we're only talking about the, your employees right now, right? An employee or an applicant? Person?
Yeah.
You mean an applicant for a job applicant?
Right.
Of which you don't have any now.
Right.
Has it suspected or confirmed?
So we would be approving everything through page 6. Page 7 is the telecommuting policy, which is not applicable. Is that correct, Lisa?
I'd have to scroll down to look at the pages, but yes, that sounds right.
That's part 3 is telecommunicating.
That's page 7 and 8.
Right, so page 7 and 8.
Yeah.
Right. So the rest of it is just, I mean, to say that we make a motion to accept this is really, this is something we can't edit or, I mean, this is just required by.
Right.
It's required, right?
It's required, yeah.
By authority having jurisdiction?
I mean, this part up here, the communicable disease, you know, this is about not discriminating against people. I was more concerned about, you know, what happens? Not that I think I have anybody on staff that would be like this, but what happens if I have somebody that refuses to wear a mask? Or I needed something to be able to say, you know what, in the event of a global pandemic, where the CDC says you should wear a mask, then you have to wear a mask when you work here.
Right.
That's really this whole idea of what do we need to have it in place so that employees know that this is the policy when there is this.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, it should be.
That makes sense.
Yep.
But that's assuming, and not only for that, that the employees are going to disclose everything to you.
Yeah, we don't have any control.
No guarantee, right?
There's no guarantee.
So it's, ugh, I don't know about this.
So here, I mean, the HR consultant is the one who came up with the disclosure language. So, you know, you should notify us. We're saying it in writing. You're supposed to notify us? You can't come back later and say, oh.
Oh, by the way, I had.
Right, and now I want this thing.
Right.
Because you never.
So it's for documentation as much as anything?
Yeah, so it's not necessarily the enforcement part of it. I guess it's just putting something in place to say, it's your job to tell us.
Yep.
Is it your job to tell you on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis?
The safety plan is requiring us to either, to put some kind of thing, some kind of protocol in place. So I either have to take people's temperatures, which I'm not going to do, or I have to require everybody, when you report to work in the building, you have to fill out a specific questionnaire. I'm going to link it to our new payroll system, Paylacity, so that when you go to clock in, it'll stop and ask like these four questions, you know? Have you been exposed? Do you have a fever? Did you travel? Whatever those questions are. And if you answer yes to any of them, it won't let you punch in, and it sends a message to me so that I can follow up with whoever, you know, didn't answer the questions. Part of the safety plan is I have to keep a log of employees, of people that come in the building, except for delivery people. So if I have a contractor coming in, I need to know that Lime Energy, that Mike from Lime Energy is coming in on Thursday. I have to keep this log. Also have to keep a log of any of the workers in the building. I'm going to use our payroll system to keep track. Like, I can look at the punch, the time clock and say, oh, look, these four people are punched in. And then I'm going to keep a paper log for the work, the contractors that might come in during the course of business. Right now, I'm most focused on how do I, how do I work with the employee side of things?
Yeah, tough.
See what else is there. So that's all about.
Wouldn't, I guess, because we're really, Lisa, aren't we really just talking about the pandemic situation here?
Yes, essentially, yes.
So maybe the only section that, where is it?
The very top up here, where it talked about a couple of other, this, this part.
Yeah, but about the other, you know, somebody with hepatitis A or measles and influenza. We're really not, that's not.
That's not part of this.
The concern here.
Well, the title of this is COVID-19 policies.
Right.
Policies, yeah.
So, I mean, should there be some language to, that this is exclusive to the current pandemic?
You'd think the section about the pandemic would be right at the top.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, you have to get to the bottom of this whole thing before you say, oh, oh, wait a minute. This is what we're adhering to to keep everybody safe.
Okay.
Because of a pandemic situation, right? Are other people feeling that way?
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's, to me, it even needs to be more strict than that, but.
What I can do is I can make changes and I can send it out to, for you to review, and we can look at it. However you want to, as long as it's on your radar that eventually we do need to, we do look at this. You know, if it's Section 1, the communicable disease part, that's a problem, we can work on that.
Right.
And then, you're right, we really don't have a lot of choices this, the other, I lost my mouse here. The other section here, where we're talking about the FICRA, right? Families First Corona Response Act, that is what it is. And that we're going to comply with the requirements.
Right, right.
Same thing for the.
The emergency family.
Yeah. So I think what we're really talking about is fixing that first part, communicable disease. And then I can fix the telecommuting part, and I can send it back for discussion. If we can do some of the discussion by email.
Sure.
And then come back together and look at it.
Well, if you need that, or the Executive Committee can make a decision.
There you go.
There, yeah.
All right.
I mean, as opposed to having everybody come back together.
Absolutely, go for it.
Only because this needs to be done soon.
It needs to be done.
Pretty soon. So I'd like to, Larry, can I move that Lisa make the corrections that she has talked about after hearing this discussion? And that the executive committee of the board review this again and make a decision whether or not to accept it at that point.
I have a question. I should have said it before Nancy made the motion, but.
That's okay.
So if you make this specific to COVID-19, what will you do if there's another virus of another sort? Do you have to create a whole nother policy? Or could you make this more encompassing for other things that could happen down the road?
I think the idea is to make it a little bit more encompassing. So on this page that's showing like under telecommuting, section A, where it's saying during emergency events as defined by director, E.G. snowstorm, hurricane, COVID-19, or whatever. I don't want hurricanes, it's bad enough.
I know, but putting all those together just doesn't seem quite right.
The intro section kind of made sense to me because it covered a lot of different things that could happen down the road. But it's titled COVID-19 at the top of the document, so the two things don't really go together. But it's just like, now that this has happened, and it could happen again and be a different virus, why not make it, well, encompass as much as possible for future?
Yeah, I agree. And then it's less work later on, like having to go back and write something.
Right, I agree, I agree.
We had this problem when we were writing the safety rules of conduct, and it would be, you know, no smoking in the library. And then the man said, I'm not smoking, I'm vaping. But then he said, no vaping in the library, you know, trying to come up with each individual thing.
Naughty thing.
Yeah, it's easier to go be a little bit, yeah.
Well, this is a little confusing because it does say COVID-19 policies at the top of this document, but then just goes on to just about anything, but not limited to. So it seems like there's a line here. I don't know.
Change the title?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, change the title, make it.
Change the title.
Communicable diseases policy or something like that.
But I do think there is a distinction between what we're dealing with now, a pandemic, and a snowstorm or the measles, right?
Right.
And that's, I guess, what's so difficult to grasp here.
It seems to me that it's, I mean, none of this, if this was business as usual and we never had heard of or had anything like this, then this policy wouldn't be, wouldn't even be on the agenda, right?
Right.
I mean, the whole reason for this has to do with COVID-19.
Right.
I hate to try to include measles.
Right, yeah.
Is Armageddon on here? I got to check. I don't see it.
A zombie apocalypse.
Zombie, that's what I was trying to think of.
Let me do a little work with it.
Yeah, yeah, we're going off the rails here. Where's Joe Ronkel, our meeting keeper?
My drink is empty.
All right, do you have, well, okay, so there is a motion on the table here.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so just so we have that. And so are we, Lisa, are you clear in terms of what the board is asking you to do?
Yes.
Okay.
There is my.
The executive committee, as the board, clear on what we're asking Lisa to do?
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Vote, let's vote.
All right, so then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, then the executive committee will expect to see something. Any sort of feeling on timeline, Lisa?
We would like to get it out by Friday.
Okay.
I'd like to get it out by Friday to you, to everybody, but we'll talk.
You get it to everybody, but I think it'd be good to just get this moving because, as you said, you may have staff on site by next week, and this will need to be in place. Okay. Anything more on the policies?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to discussion items that was inserted at the last minute. Nancy, I guess you get the floor.
Yeah, sorry about that, but.
No, you're fine, that's fine.
You know, the foundation so seldom meets that I thought you wouldn't want to miss what happened. And just to let you know, we had, what, Joe, a two and a half hour meeting?
Rather long.
Yes, so there was a lot of discussion about a lot of different items, and I am not going to go into all of those. I'm going to just mention a couple that I think are important for you to know about. We did decide to, because of this weird year, we actually did not have our annual meeting in January to elect new officers, so we passed a resolution to retain the same officers and positions and committees and what have you for another year without going through a real annual meeting. We heard the audit from Elaine. There was a lot of discussion, some really good questions for her, and I've heard from some board members after that. We need to continue to discuss some items, mainly having to do with lines in our budget and in the audit about restricted and unrestricted income, and Lisa is aware of that. And we may be doing some digging back into the boxes, right, Lisa, the files, the history.
Not a lot, but I'll get.
No, I'm not asking you to do it now.
Yeah.
But that's something that we do need to, we do need to work on. So we passed a resolution, oh, we heard from Elaine, then we heard from Bill Light, who's our investment manager, and as you can appreciate, you know, it wasn't great. None of those reports at this point are great, but it wasn't horrible either, right, Joe?
Correct, no, it's coming back.
It's coming back, we keep saying it's coming back. But we did pass a resolution to not give the library an allocation for another year, for 2021. And that's really because of two things. One is the market, trying to get back on track with earnings for the foundation, build it back up to what we want it to be and what it should be. And the other item is the roof. So because everything's been put on hold, we're sort of left hanging at this point. You know, Lisa's told us as much as she possibly can, but we can't make any decisions about what to do with the roof. And Larry, the building committee appreciates that. So I think those were the two big reasons for the resolution to not provide the allocation to the library for another year. Now, that doesn't mean we're not, we're available, the foundation is there, and Lisa knows that. Certainly not going to let the library go under by any means. So, Joe, anything else in relation to that?
No, I don't think so. Those are the big crux of what's relative to the library board, yeah.
And the other action item, Larry, which I mentioned in the email to you, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but we have had discussions in the periphery here with both boards about the ownership of the building. And as you know, we have, over the years, tried to rewrite the lease and look at the lease and try to make things, you know, more understandable for everybody. So I really want to move ahead with this. And to that end, we appointed two representatives to meet, I hope, with two representatives from the trustees to talk about the building ownership. Should it remain in the hands of the foundation? Should we transfer the ownership of the building and the property to the library? That's the big arching overall question. So Mike Trapani and I will be the two representatives from the foundation. And Larry, I don't know how you want to handle that.
I'll.
If it's possible to appoint or elect two people at this meeting, that would be great, but.
Yeah, I would be, I'll raise my hand for one of those positions.
Okay.
If there is someone else who is willing to jump in now, let me, then by all means. Hearing crickets?
How about Ellen, how about your granddaughter?
I understand, people, certainly I understand. This is an important issue. It is something.
Very important, very important.
Kicked around, and especially in light of, you know, what we'd like to do with regard to our, you know, our overall master plan and looking forward to, you know, the years to come. You know, this is going to be an important issue in terms of fundraising, in terms of just maintenance and care of the building. So I'm not sure where, what we'll do or how we'll attack this. I'm thinking that it'll be a pros and cons kind of discussion.
Right.
I assume at some point we're going to need some legal assistance in that.
Right.
Welcome, but I think from at least our perspective, it's, from my perspective anyway, right now it's more discussion and what ifs, and what might happen and what should happen, and what are, like I said, what are the pros and cons? So a couple of meetings to go over that and try to set a direction. But then in the end, we're obviously going to need some legal.
Legal, yeah, and that's where, you know, we're prepared to do that. That was mentioned at our meeting, you already, you have Ellen helping you if need be. And we will do the same thing, but it'll be somebody who will help us pull this together if that's what we decide to do. But it will start, Larry, as you said, with, you know, like when you choose your spouse, the pros, the cons. You didn't do that?
We all had those discussions, I suppose.
So we will start. Now, you know, I wish it could get going right away, but given the situation, we may not be able to until we can, until we can sit down. I'm willing to take the lead on this and come up with an agenda for the four of us, whoever that fourth person is.
Okay.
The only reason I'm sort of coming forward is I have been on the board quite a while, and I do have some history, so I'm not, I love everybody, I'm great glad everybody's here, but I'm just thinking that maybe I better be the one.
Yay.
Yay.
I don't want this, I don't want, I'm not going to take this, you know, on as like this leadership, but I have been on this board for quite a while, through quite a bit, and I just feel I have to step forward.
Thank you, Ellen. I do think it is important as we go through this to have that historical perspective too. So I appreciate that from my side here.
And maybe we'll be able to physically meet and be, wear our masks and.
Yeah, absolutely. If Lisa lets us in the building.
So I am giving my name, okay?
Say it again, Lisa?
Said we can meet in my backyard and be all physically distant.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We bring our own wine for that?
Yeah, you may need it.
Oh, you didn't say anything about wine. Need a motion?
Do you need a motion for this, or is this, I don't think we do.
I would say it's an appointment.
It's sort of an ad hoc.
Okay, consensus, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's how we handle it.
Yeah. Okay, so Ellen and I will be part of that, and we'll wait to hear from you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for moving it forward with the foundation as well.
No problem.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, that's it.
Well, you don't want to hear the rest.
So.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Nancy, did not the foundation kind of say to us prior to this meeting that they might not give us money next year? Wasn't that already mentioned before?
I don't recall, Ellen, it may have been mentioned, I don't recall, since we haven't met, the foundation hasn't met. We never voted on.
Lisa, do you have a period?
I thought, I know it was for 2019 and 2020.
Twenty.
Now.
Now it's 2020, okay.
21, and it's because we're working on our 2021 budget, and so it's really good for the foundation to say.
To say this is going to happen, all right.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we may have said for a two-year period.
Two-year, I think, right. And I wasn't.
I would say this makes it official.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Nancy?
No.
Okay, then the last item on the agenda is reopening New York's safety plan.
Yes, so I don't. If.
There it isn't, that isn't it.
See, I'll find it here somewhere. Here's, this is a plan that all businesses who are reopening need to fill out and keep on file in your building. So I just wanted you to, I'll make sure everybody has a copy, but you all have access to Google Drive, so you should be able to find the document. But it's asking about, and things that are highlighted are things we're still working on because it is a work in progress. So, you know, we haven't put tape down yet to say we're standing this far apart. And I can feel like that has more to do with the public than it has to do with staff.
Staff.
Right, so.
It's not a bad idea to have it, though, just to remind staff.
Right.
What six feet is.
Right.
Everybody around a pole, six foot pole.
Yeah, instead of a yardstick, or two yards.
Right, right, so everybody carries around a three foot, that's right, three yards.
Right.
So we have to go through all of this and establish areas for pickup and deliveries. And then it goes into these questions about how will you manage customers and visitors? And we're saying we're going to restrict access to the floor and bathrooms, and that we're going to, access to the children's room, the history room, and public computers would be by appointment. We're going to install a sneeze guard, we'll post signs, we're going to promote the use of a check. So, you know, we're trying to work our way through all of these questions, and they're really good questions. It's important to walk through all of that. So that's about people, the next section is about places and talking about face coverings and how are we going to make sure we have the supplies that we need? What are common objects that are likely to be shared? And so we have this list. There's a webinar that's being paid for by Finger Lakes Library System I'm attending tomorrow, and I have a couple of other people from staff who will attend. It's a woman who does workplace safety, she's from Cornell, and she brought up this idea of, you know, we all know about the elevator buttons and the railings, but we also share the coffee scoop. All the employees touch this coffee scoop, so, you know, how do we, what's our plan for that level of, you know, common? So, you know, how do we, what's our plan for that level of, you know, common items? So we're trying to work through that. And I'll have more information after I finish that webinar. I'm working on cleaners right now. We really don't have cleaners because there's nobody in the building. We were on a month-to-month contract with American Commercial Cleaners. I really don't want them back. I would like to bring cleaning in-house again. I feel like we'd have a lot more control over it. What I'm thinking is there's a library assistant who, Roseanne, who had worked in the past as a cleaner for one of the churches and rectories. She's going to be losing hours. And it's possible that, because there's not enough work for a library assistant, but she might be interested in, I have a cleaner position. She can do both. It's just when she clocks in, it's whatever job she's doing. But I checked with civil service, and she could fulfill both roles. And if it's Roseanne, then I would have her be responsible for maintaining this checklist that Bill is developing. We're working on what are the spaces that can be problematic? And then how are we communicating all of this to staff and the public? So we have some pieces that we still have to fill out. I still have to find out that if a worker tests positive, how do I notify the state or the local health department? I'm looking for the exact thing that I need to do. And then there's a lot of process pieces. But it's very detailed. And you can see, again, some of it is filled in. It's a work in progress. But it needs to be in place before we open. My goal is that this would be completed, to the best of our knowledge, as of Friday. And I'll be able to send that link out again to you.
Okay.
Lisa, if you bring cleaning in-house and have a staff person, will there be, is there additional equipment you're going to need, you know, for that person to use for disinfecting? I know, like at the Y, they are getting one of those special packs, you know, that you disinfect everything with because they've got equipment and such. They weren't that expensive. But do you know, are you going to need more than just, you know, disinfectant? Are you going to need special machinery or anything like that?
I wasn't aware of the need for any kind of special equipment right now. You know, knowing that we're not letting the public in the building, that it's just employees, and we're quarantining any materials that come into the building, whether they're returned through the book drop or whether they're new books that just got shipped to us. They will be quarantined right now for 72 hours. There's an IMLS study in place. And if that recommendation is a different time period, then we would go with that recommendation. So all of Finger Lakes would match. So I just don't see the need right now to do that level of disinfecting other than the wiping down. One of the workshops I went to talked about whatever you're using to wipe down. Like if you have a protocol that you're asking your staff to wipe down hard surfaces every hour or at the end of your shift or whatever that is, you have to read on the back of it. Every cleaning agent has a different time period that it's effective. So when you spray, if it has to stay for three minutes, then it has to stay for three minutes. Wiping it down after 30 seconds defeats the purpose. So we have to make sure that we're consistent with the product that we use or we set, not the least common denominator, but, you know, if three minutes is the extent, then maybe we set that and everybody just follow that rule. But I don't think right now that we're going to have to buy that kind of equipment. I think what we have, for the most part, in-house is fine.
Will work, okay.
And to piggyback on that question, do you think only one staff person can do all this?
We have two cleaner positions. One is held by a woman named Kathy, Kathy Cottier. And she currently is only working six hours a week. She's a little bit challenged, and she needs a supervisor. And she's just been doing light dusting, and she's at these trash. She can do a little bit more with supervision. And if it, whoever it is, whether it's Roseanne or whether I hire somebody else, I feel that would be good. And I would be able to have, the new person coming in could work, you know, I don't know, three hours a day? And are there other tasks they could do, more cleaning that's not getting done now? And we also have Andy. So Andy could pick up a little bit of slack as well. So I think between the three of them, we can finesse our hours.
And also, Lisa, I'm just seeing at the bottom of this sheet that you have up right now on page six, I guess it is. Is it going to be the responsibility of the businesses to do the contact tracing once you open?
I, there's a lot of comments in the library listserv. Or we feel that that's not our, that that's something that has to come from the public health.
Right. I would say so, wow.
Yeah. There's, you know, there's a lot of questions about, people, some libraries are saying because of this, we're supposed to have a log of everybody that comes in the building. But New York State has, libraries have a confidentiality law, so we're not actually allowed to hand over a log of people who came in the building. So there's, I think there's a, Finger Lakes is getting more clarification on the language from Stephanie Adams, the woman who's been the Ask a Lawyer for Finger Lakes. So I'm waiting for Sarah to give us more information. That's why I highlighted response here because we weren't planning on doing contact.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's good.
So tracers are for...
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, great. There's just a lot to be considered. I believe that we need to be a work in progress.
Yes, it's a living document.
Yeah, because you're not going to, any of these policies, I believe, are going to have to require that we review them. You, Lisa, and then if things need to be changed or modified or brought to the board's attention, then we need to be aware that this is, you know, a fixed point in time. We're acting on information we know today. That it changes, and so we need to be recognized that it's going to change in time.
Yes.
Okay.
This looks good, though. I mean, it's comprehensive.
And as Nancy said last time, thank you, Lisa, for all this work, literally. I mean it. It's amazing how much you have done in one month when we first talked about it a month ago. Seriously.
We have a lot of people working on it.
I know, I know that.
It's been amazing.
It's huge to everybody.
I hope you guys like the newsletter that Lee, Jackie, Erie, Jill, they have been doing so much with that. It's just, I love what they're doing. I've been trying to stay out of their way so everybody can focus on actually doing their job instead of me. Saying, hey, by the way, Dory is really helping me with a lot of the policies and with the safety plan. And I'm actually naming Dory as the workforce COVID coordinator. Somewhere I have to name somebody, so. Dory's the man.
Good, wonderful.
Well, please tell them we appreciate all their service during this very, very difficult time.
In that garden. Oh, my God, it's gorgeous. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next month, are we, are we going to keep at the 4:00 or go back to the 5:30? Do you know?
Whatever you guys want.
Doesn't matter to me, not like I'm doing anything. I personally, in the summer, the 4:00 o'clock is a good time.
Four is better.
Much better.
Much better for me.
Yep.
Okay, the 4:00?
And what would the date of that be?
Is it the 23rd of June?
23rd of June. 23rd of June, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good month, Nancy. Thanks. Stay safe out there.
Thank you, Dixie.